July 31, Jamestown City Council Boarding Session Order. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Sheldon?
Here.
Crackman?
Here.
Carruba?
Here.
Reynolds?
Present.
Faulkner?
Here.
Ackland?
Here.
Deversa?
Here.
Russell? And President Dolezal?
Here. At this time, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invitation, which will be led by myself tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Dear heavenly fathers we gather tonight to make important decisions, to lead our city forward, give this council strength to make proper decisions, they've worked very hard, our city administration, we pray for our city employees, particularly our fire and police departments, that are busy each week doing their jobs. As we move forward, we also recognize the many events and honor and cherish the events of our city in the next month or the rest of the summer as we head towards the fall. In your name we pray.
Amen.
Good job, brother.
I had a little practice again. It'll be a weekend though, it's my next job. Okay. With approval of the minutes of the June 26 Boarding Sessions, so moved by Councilmember Carruba. Do you have any messages from the mayor this evening?
Dear councilmembers, in July 2023, we have welcomed one new employee to the City of Jamestown, Abigail Moorewall, Department of Public Works. I am asking that this new hire be acknowledged and welcomed to the City at the July 31, 2023 City Council meeting. On July 13, 2023, I recognized by proclamation the retirement of one City of Jamestown employee, Robert Bender, Jamestown Police Department. Attached, please find the retirement proclamation honoring and congratulating our retiring employee. Very truly yours, Lady Sunkless.
Thank you. At this time, we give opportunities for persons to address the council. Does anyone here tonight would like to address the council? Please step up to one of the mics, give your name and address, and then write your remarks to five minutes. Does anyone here want to address the council?
Good evening. Gary Mooney from Hotel Jamestown, just on the street. Thank you for your opportunity to speak for council, before the city and before the residents. I have had a lot of complaints in the past, recent history, and I would just like to articulate subject complaints one more time, for the record, in terms of the behavior of certain businesses on my behalf. I am specifically stating, for the Labyrinth Restaurant and owner Jeff James, in association with the company producer Paul Clemente and his karate sleepover, I am making an official charge of censorship to my ability to speak at their event. During this massive Whirligird Festival, I decided to basically boycott the event because the event providers were also not allowing me to participate as an official part of their festival. Their claim was I missed the deadline, they would not even communicate that they, in terms of relaxing, any participation whatsoever. So I set that one out. I believe that this effectively has blacklisted me from the major events sponsored by the city, the Whirligird Festival and the only acting comedy open mic in Jamestown, New York. I am effectively being blacklisted and not able to participate, at least on an official level. As a street performer, I could easily just bull guard my way onto the street and it would be very distasteful, in my opinion, to be soliciting donations in my own hat when they are funneling donations at their entry. This, to me, is a way of making me look bad when they are actually performing what I do for a living, voluntary performance for voluntary donations. I set that standard as being. I'd like to just mention that the results of my efforts have resulted in the residents on Fourth Street suing the Labyrinth Restaurant for noise pollution, the fact that they were doing their loud bands and over-the-top noise in a residential area, which is actually zoned, commercial, as this zoning in their residence allows for a much louder noise tolerance than is reasonable. I believe that the city should reexamine the zoning in this incidence, specifically that parties can be allowed within a very, very narrow parameter, to allow for the people who do live in those second-tier apartments to have a reasonable time on reasonable days. You can have your parties on Fridays and Saturdays, sure, but you have to be reasonable for the residents, and that has to be incorporated in the zoning, so that they cannot be loophole into having loud events that disturb the public. One last issue that I had, over a month ago, I was in a public safety meeting, and one of the council members at that meeting, one of the committee members, accused me for my labyrinth street performing. I was on the city property adjacent to labyrinth. This council member, this committee member, accused me of being in violation of a trespass, which has never been officially, to my determination, filed. I have had many requests for public information, and the mayor's office has thoroughly investigated one of these and determined that no such filing exists. I am asking that the council follow up on my requests for information, and I ask this patiently, and thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to address the council?
I'd like to, uh, I'm gonna try the other mic.
I've got some pictures here. Anthony Choda, 144 Clifton, and Jamestown. I've got some pictures I'd like to distribute, if you want to allow me a couple of those to come in. One to the mayor. There's four pictures here, four of each, as should be. You'll get the idea, and also the city council. Yeah, I've got four, and I think there's a few with three in there, so.
Is there anything you'd like to say about them, or are you just?
Yeah, Anthony Choda, 144 Clifton, and I wanted to address the yearly violations of the fireworks law in Jamestown, New York, and the negligence, negligence referred to that by the Jamestown police. It was a, on July 4th, about 10:14 a.m., I was going down East Street, and someone threw explosive device fireworks in my direction near my car, so I turned around, and at that time I dialed 911, and I stayed in the area, hoping the police would come. There were a group of people on the side of A Street in Monroe, on the north side of the street, who were igniting these fireworks, and on the south side, and some of those pictures will show, south side of A Street, they were exploding over businesses and residences. There's also pictures there of fireworks around the park, about a couple blocks away, the park off of Washington Street, and they were going over houses there. So I just wanted to say that the mayor and the city council are constantly talking about old housing stock and trying to refurbish housing stock by using the land bank, because we have such a problem with housing, so we're trying to rejuvenate houses, rebuild houses, remodel houses. This is kind of a slap in the face here, because in the midst of all this rhetoric, once a year, the police allow someone to commit these types of crimes that endanger the housing stock, old housing stock, and that's exactly where it is, on A Street and off of the park there on A Street. I also drowned down Second Street towards Windsor, and rockets were going off there, showering debris, fireworks debris, all over the housing stock there. So there's, uh, let's see if I got the, uh, when I did call the 911, dispatcher told me that the police had responded within two minutes. I've got a 14-minute tape that shows they never got there. As I drove east, okay, now I'm addressed as to the chief, you obviously have a relationship with these perpetrators to allow them to yearly break fireworks laws in your presence, and that's not just this chief, this has been going on since Chief Snellings also. It's no wonder why my traffic complaints go unanswered, because at least, in my case, the Jamestown Police Department allows drivers to harass, annoy, and endanger my safety and health by letting criminals constantly commit vehicle and traffic violations and crimes around myself. On Friday, July 28th, around 4:23 p.m., I spoke with Officer Nickerson at the Jamestown Command Desk and asked him if the police ticketed anyone in response to my complaint earlier that day, and he stated no. And this is what happens, and this is what I've been doing lately, I'm double-checking to see if the police are actually doing their jobs, and they're not. They're not ticketing anybody after my complaint. I told Mr. Nickerson that the negligence of the police amounted to harassing me. Mr. Nickerson's response to me over that statement was, "He must be harassing me over the telephone," so he hung up. Now, this kind of illogic has been surrounding my life, by professionals, for over 20 years now. I want to know what the answer is, why that kind of illogic response was stated, and I can tell you what it shows. It shows disrespect, it shows negligence by the police, and it shows a common bind not to do the job, in my case, and a lack of understanding of my complaints. So the indifference and negligence, lack of response by the police, been going on for 20 years, it continues under this administration, and I'm keeping track of it. I'm gonna call the command desk to double-check, as I've been doing for the last two or three months, to find out, and I'm not getting any responses that any tickets have been issued. So once I get that information over a period of years, it's gonna show that in a very, very minute case, series of my cases over 20 years, when I'm constantly harassed by noise, speeding vehicles, reckless drivers, there are hardly any tickets being issued at all by the Jamestown police.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Melissa Pederman, 346 Faulkner Street. There's a lot of things I have to say, but I'm gonna start out with the main one. So I went to a library presentation last week. I walked in, I walked in the room, and I thought I was going into something different than what I walked into. I thought that I was going to talk about crosswalk safety at the library, but what I walked into was a presentation that felt like just a Democratic Party. So what I really didn't like about it was that the principal planner, kind of a little nasty with me, I did bring it to Crystal's attention, but this isn't the first time that I've had a run-in with this woman. She came here, what, three years ago, and she's been a problem since the beginning, right? The mayor needs to step up and make sure that this woman is doing her job, because I think that's his job. So probably about three years, two years ago, three years ago, the city started a food truck pilot program, and there was only three of us, four of us, that showed up to the meetings, and I was told that there wasn't enough people to make a committee. Well, that shouldn't have ever happened, okay? I love food trucks, I think food trucks are great, I think food trucks, if the program would have been written right, if the program would have been followed correctly, the success of that program would have taken off, but it didn't because of Ellen Shadle, Shadle, whatever the tech or name is. But anyway, I don't appreciate, like, people have blamed me personally for that food truck pilot program not taking off. What? Like, if I had that much control over all of you, gosh, I wish I would have known. But I, but I stand here tonight, you know, talking to the council and, and to the mayor, like, I just don't understand how someone can do this job over here, incomplete. How many people say, "Missy, do you know what's going on with the mural?" "I don't know." "Do y'all know?" Because somebody knows. "I don't know." But that's three incidents, and the last one was, I'm standing there at the corner of Sixth Street in Cherry, I think, and she says to me after asking a question, "I have it in a drawing, I'll send it to you," with a chip on her shoulder, because I asked a question on how she's going to change the junction of Fifth and Sixth Street to a one-way street, or a two-way street, and that's the response I got. I don't appreciate it. I show up to these meetings, I show up, I show up, I watch the meetings, and I'm disappointed in the leadership, mainly, because if the city employees aren't doing their jobs, it's the mayor's job to make sure that that's taken care of. And going into a political year, that's not what I want to see. I don't want to see a mayor that can't run his city, that would rather go out of town all the time, trying to make himself look good to other people. I'm tired of it. I come here all the time, and I speak my mind, and, and people say to me, "Well, why do you do that?" "Well, because I care about the City of Jamestown." I do, you know? I call the police and say, "Hey, there's this or this going on," and you know what? They show up. I, I, Mr. Choda says they don't show up, they show up. And just the other day, there was an incident, a girl posted a status on Facebook and said there was a 9:45 at the, at the emergency room, and they let her go. Do you know what a 9:45 is? A 9:45 should hold a 45-hour, or like 48-hour hold on someone with a mental illness. But you know what? She showed up in my neighborhood, screaming and yelling and sounding like she was fighting with someone else, but she was really fighting with herself. We have a mental health problem, we have a mental health crisis. We talk about public safety all the time, but we forget about two of the things, traffic and mental health. And mental health is never going to get better if we keep policing it. You can't police mental health. You can't. Their hands are tied. I went out when that police officer took care of that girl in the street.
Missy, you have five minutes left.
Okay.
Thank you. Does anyone else would like to address the council? Saying that, we will move on. Any presentation of petitions or communications? If not, we'll move on to reports on our standing committees. We'll start with the Finance Committee, and the first nine resolutions will be read by Councilwoman Carruba.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing payment of the regular audit.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Crackman?
Here.
Carruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Ackland?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
And President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the payment of $38,456.26 for six months' interest at 3% per annum on $3,500,000.00 in no sense on public improvement bonds.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Carruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Ackland?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor and deputy fire chief to enter into an agreement with Redmond Peterson, Inc., GPI, to prepare engineering drawings for the Station 5 floor replacement in an amount not to exceed $16,500.00 in no sense.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Carruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Ackland?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor and deputy fire chief to enter into an agreement with Gorman Enterprises, doing business as Western New York West Part, Inc., for the purchase of one 2020-23 Class III Chevrolet 3500 chassis with Type III ambulance body in an amount not to exceed $217,741.00 in no sense.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Carruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Ackland?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Redmond Peterson, Inc., GPI, to prepare engineering drawings for the Station 5 floor replacement in an amount not to exceed $16,500.00 in no sense.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Carruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Ackland?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor and deputy fire chief to enter into an agreement with Gorman Enterprises, doing business as Western New York West Part, Inc., for the purchase of one 2020-23 Class III Chevrolet 3500 chassis with Type III ambulance body in an amount not to exceed $217,741.00 in no sense.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Carruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Ackland?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor and deputy fire chief to enter into an agreement with Gorman Enterprises, doing business as Western New York West Part, Inc., for the purchase of one 2020-23 Class III Chevrolet 3500 chassis with Type III ambulance body in an amount not to exceed $217,741.00 in no sense.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Carruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Ackland?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor and deputy fire chief to enter into an agreement with Eagle Radio Technologies, doing business as Motorola Communications Services of Western New York and Pennsylvania Incorporated, for the purchase of 40 Motorola APX 6000XE portable radio receivers and related accessories for a total amount not to exceed $252,768.35.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Carruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Ackland?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor and deputy fire chief to enter into an agreement with Eagle Radio Technologies, doing business as Motorola Communications Services of Western New York and Pennsylvania Incorporated, for the purchase of 40 Motorola APX 6000XE portable radio receivers and related accessories for a total amount not to exceed $252,768.35.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Just to note, the funding is provided through the Firefighters Assistance Grant.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Carruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Ackland?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor and deputy fire chief to enter into an agreement with Riddmer Public Safety Group, Incorporated, for the purchase of 72 Sterling STX personal escape kits for a total amount not to exceed $30,078.00 in no sense.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
This was also noted as funded by the Firefighters Assistance Grant.
Thank you. Any other comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Carruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Ackland?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor and deputy fire chief to enter into an agreement with Riddmer Public Safety Group, Incorporated, for the purchase of 72 Sterling STX personal escape kits for a total amount not to exceed $30,078.00 in no sense.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
This was also noted as funded by the Firefighters Assistance Grant.
Thank you. Any other comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Carruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Ackland?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor and deputy fire chief to enter into an agreement with Riddmer Public Safety Group, Incorporated, for the purchase of 72 Sterling STX personal escape kits for a total amount not to exceed $30,078.00 in no sense.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
This was also noted as funded by the Firefighters Assistance Grant.
Thank you. Any other comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Carruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Ackland?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor and deputy fire chief to enter into an agreement with Riddmer Public Safety Group, Incorporated, for the purchase of 72 Sterling STX personal escape kits for a total amount not to exceed $217,741.00 in no sense.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Carruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Ackland?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Redmond Peterson, Inc., GPI, to prepare engineering drawings for the Station 5 floor replacement in an amount not to exceed $16,500.00 in no sense.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Carruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Ackland?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor and deputy fire chief to enter into an agreement with Gorman Enterprises, doing business as Western New York West Part, Inc., for the purchase of one 2020-23 Class III Chevrolet 3500 chassis with Type III ambulance body in an amount not to exceed $217,741.00 in no sense.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Carruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Ackland?
Aye.
She showed up in my neighborhood screaming and yelling and sounding like she was fighting with someone else, but she was really fighting with herself. We have a mental health problem, we have a mental health crisis. We talk about public safety all the time, but we forget about two of the things, traffic and mental health. And mental health is never going to get better if we keep policing it. You can't police mental health. You can't. Their hands are tied. I went out when that police officer took care of that girl in the street.
Missy, you're five minutes early.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Saying that, we may well move on. Is there any presentation of petitions or communications? If not, we'll move on to reports on our standing committees. We'll start with the Finance Committee, and the first nine resolutions will be read by Councilwoman Carruba.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing payment of the regular audit.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Carruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
And President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the payment of $49,925 and no cents for six months' interest at 2.875% per annum on $3,500,000 and no cents on public improvement bonds.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Carruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
And President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the payment of $38,456.26 for six months' interest at 3% per annum on $2,995,000 and no cents on public improvement bonds.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Carruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
And President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor and director of development to accept the Healthy Homes Production Grant Program through the period ending April 14th, 2026, with funding in the amount of $1,378,316.54 provided by the Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Carruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Redmond Peterson, Inc., GPI, to prepare engineering drawings for the Station 5 floor replacement in an amount not to exceed $16,500 and no cents.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Carruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor and deputy fire chief to enter into an agreement with Gorman Enterprises doing business as Western New York West Parts, Inc., for the purchase of one 2020-23 Class III Chevrolet 3500 chassis with Type III ambulance body in an amount not to exceed $217,741 and no cents.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Carruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor and deputy fire chief to enter into an agreement with Eagle Radio Technologies doing business as Motorola Communications Services of Western New York and Pennsylvania, Incorporated, for the purchase of 40 Motorola APX 6000XE portable radio receivers and related accessories for a total amount not to exceed $252,768.35.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Just to note, the funding is provided through the firefighter's assistance grant.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Carruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor and deputy fire chief to enter into an agreement with Riddmer Public Safety Group, Incorporated, for the purchase of 72 Sterling SDX personal escape kits for a total amount not to exceed $30,078.05.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
This was also noted as funded by the firefighter's assistance grant.
Thank you. Any other comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Carruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing five recruit firefighters to attend the New York State Office of Fire Prevention and Control Recruit Firefighter Training Program in Montour Falls, New York, beginning 9/31/2023, and concluding November 10th, 2023, with expenses paid pursuant to 777-B of the General Municipal Law.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Carruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
President Dolezal?
Aye.
The next ten resolutions will be sponsored by Councilwoman Eklund.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Transportation, 1200 New Jersey Avenue Southeast, Washington, D.C., 20590, for the Safe Streets of Law Plan, Your Grant.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Carruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Arped concrete and excavating LLC for concrete work Juliet Street, 2023 reconstruction in an amount not to exceed $173,435.05.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Carruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
And President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute change order number one with Arped concrete and excavating LLC for concrete work West 11th, Lafayette, and West 10th Streets for a total decrease of $18,493.50.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Carruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor and Mark Wetzser, P.E., to make an emergency purchase of one rooftop pulmonary unit to be installed at New Russell E. Dietrich Park in an amount not to exceed $85,725.05.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Carruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the city comptroller to make the following amendment to the 2023 general fund budget for the purchase of the pulmonary unit as follows. Increase appropriations equipment $8.7210.0200.0000 Decrease appropriations contingent account $8.1990.04.00.00
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Carruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
And President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute all necessary agreements, certifications, and reimbursement requests for federal aid and/or Marchesselli aid on behalf of the City of Jamestown and the New York State Department of Transportation for the Fairmont Avenue Side Street Project.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Carruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
And President Dolezal?
Aye.
Can we continue?
Yes.
We had six, he doesn't matter. Go ahead.
You all set? Good?
We got it.
Okay. I have a resolution lifting the hiring freeze to allow the hiring of one engineer in the Department of Public Works due to a pending retirement.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Carruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
And President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor, Mark Wetzter, P.E., to purchase one John Deere compact tractor from Landquodot Equipment LLC in the amount not to exceed $40,331.42.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Carruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
And President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution designating $10,000.05 in American Rescue Plan Act loss revenue funds for the purpose of purchasing a salt brine system.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
For clarification, $10,000 doesn't purchase the salt brine, it's an additional $10,000 needed to cover the cost from an earlier resolution that was for $185,000.
Thank you. Any other comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Carruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
And President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor, Mark Wetzter, P.E., to purchase one salt brine system from Henderson Products, Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed $195,000.05.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Carruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
And President Dolezal?
Aye.
That concludes our resolutions for finance. Moving on to public safety, there's one resolution under public safety which will be sponsored by Councilman Sheldon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution appointing Barbara Martin and reappointing Francine Fialza as an officer of community needs for a term of two years.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Carruba?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Deversa?
Aye.
President Dolezal?
Aye.
That concludes our prefiled resolutions and our committees. Is there any report of special committees? Report of city officers? Report from council persons on administrative boards? Is there any unfinished business? We do have one, two, three, four, five resolutions under new business. The first resolution...
Four.
Four? Four. One, two, three, four. I, okay, I don't teach math, so... The first resolution will be sponsored by Councilman Deversa.
Thank you, Mr. President. Resolution rescinding resolution 202303A19 adopted March 27th, 2023 with the New York State Department of Transportation for the milling and paving of Fairmont Avenue Side Street intersection.
Thank you.